Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 11th, 2020 meeting. As we always do, can we please stand for the pledge? Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the republic of America. To the republic which stands one intention, indivisible, small community, every justice.
Thank you. As we have in the past few meetings, you just have a moment of silence, please, for all the victims of this pandemic and for all the healthcare workers and first responders out there. Thank you very much. All right, so first on the agenda tonight is correspondence, which we have a few. Does anybody have any comments?
No comments from me.
John, anything we need to talk about?
You're okay with me sending the Featherbed memo, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. And in there for your info is the Health Department's comment letter on Featherbed as well, so look that through, because we've been talking about that. That's all.
Anybody have any issues?
Excuse me?
No.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the meeting minutes of the May 4th, 2020 meeting. Has anybody had a chance to review the minutes?
I have.
Yes, I have.
Bill, John?
No problem with me.
I have nothing.
I told Nancy I just had a couple of... I don't know what it is with spell check. It's procedurally is spelled incorrectly in the Nestle Waters section, but correctly in, I think it was the following, Colangelo. It was missing an L in the Nestle Waters. I would recommend commas in two places that I'll let Nancy know about, but on the Colangelo major subdivision, one in two-thirds of the way through the first paragraph, which is on page four at the top. Just for clarity, there's a sentence that starts, "There will be permanent backup generation capabilities." I think, you know, it's the first mention of the generators, so I think we should say the word generator. There will be permanent backup generators required for each residence. I think that makes it a little clearer. In addition to the one-day storage tank, it kind of puts in the record the the aspects of the different systems for each, actually for each residence and I believe the community building, right, Joe? Each would have a generator?
Yes.
Yeah. You know, because you say backup generation capability, it could be solar power generation or, you know, whatever. That's just my suggestion. In the following 387 Granite Springs Road application, second to the last sentence in the first paragraph, "A wall is proposed along the back of the driveway, since the garage will be under the house." It actually runs along the side of the driveway and the back, because it's gonna have to be excavated there. That retaining wall is along the driveways, as well as at the back of the house. In the following paragraph, Mr. Schmidt is talking, and the sentence that starts, "In addition, the board asks for a separation from the rear yard to the remaining wetland," not the rear year. Two more commas, and I think that's it. Love the quotes around the word, "Yes, Nancy." The response was yes. And that's it, just a couple of commas, but those are my recommendations and observations.
Okay, so with the comments that are noted, do I have a motion to approve the May 4th, 2020 meeting minutes?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're gonna move into the regular session portion of the meeting. First on the agenda is the Fusco Minor Subdivision. They're looking for reapproval of the subdivision. Location's 3477 Stony Street. The Nancy RC's project.
Thank you. We got this subdivision, the town, the planning board adopted a resolution last May, so we've been in for two 90-day time extensions, so we've run out on the time extensions, and at this juncture, we require reapproval, so we're requesting the board consider this for a reapproval, which I guess would be for 180 days.
John, any issues on your end?
We have no issues on our end, no.
Jim?
No issues.
Anybody from the board?
No changes, Dan?
No, it's exactly the same plan that you had seen.
Great.
And nothing, nothing on the property has been altered.
Okay, great.
Do we have anybody from the audience, Robin, that is showing any interest in this? If they do, send an instant message or wave at Robin with the hand. Give him a minute. Robin, you're on mute.
I said that everyone else is here for other items. Laura is listening. I didn't think she wanted to say anything, though. I'm listening.
All right, so if there's no questions from the audience, do I have a motion for the Fusco subdivision reapproval?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is the Fiori Minor Subdivision. They are also seeking a reapproval of the subdivision. Location, 2797 Carr Court. Joe Reno?
Evening, Joseph Reno, the Principal Site Design Consultants. We're asking for a reapproval of this project subdivision. We're currently, we hit a slight snag when we were before the Health Department, and I'm just gonna bring up... Can I share, Robin?
Sure.
Okay, do you all see my plan? Okay. Existing residents, which is right here, built in the 60s. At the time, when they built this project out, the sewer connection for the existing home goes through the adjoining property to the right, then connects to the sewer on two properties owner, over. And at that time, no easements were established for the sewer connection. So the Health Department is asking us that we get a sewer easement from the neighbor. Mr. Fiori has been in contact with the neighbor. The neighbor has agreed to it. We are waiting to get the line scoped out and located to its exact location, so the surveyor can plot it exactly on the plan and prescribe an easement for the Fioris over this lot on number 2800 Carr Court. So this, you know, this kind of caught us by surprise. Originally, this project was being reviewed by Fred Beck at the Health Department, who passed away in the fall, and it took some time for us to get it transitioned over to another reviewer. And so this came up last month in May, in April, rather, and we're addressing it now. And that's, that's pretty much where we are, so we're gonna need more time to deal with this issue.
So, John, do we table this, or can we proceed with?
No, you can proceed.
Okay.
Yeah, there's nothing, nothing has changed really from when you actually approved it, so I think you can proceed, unless, unless Jim has some other issues.
Jim?
I don't have any issues. I think you can proceed.
Okay, anything from any of the members of the board?
How close to accurate do you think that existing line is? Does it actually go under the corner of the adjacent property's house?
I doubt it, John. I mean, the only thing we have is like a hand-drawn field sketch.
Got it.
That, when the sewer permit was taken out, so I, I, I doubt it's underneath the foundation of that house.
All right, anything else from the board? Okay, Robin, we'll open it up to the audience. Anybody from the audience have any concerns about the project?
I don't think there's anybody else on.
Okay, that makes life easy. So if there's no objections, do I have a motion from the board to reapprove the subdivision for the Fiori project?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm recusing myself on that one.
Okay, thank you, John.
You too.
All right, we just gotta wait for Joe to lose the screen?
I'm trying to find, oh, here it is.
All right, there we go. Okay, next on the agenda is the Nestle Water. This is a decision statement, location, 3775 Cromptoune Road. Joe, you're on.
Well, as you all know, we've gone through several meetings on this. I think we're at the point where we've agreed on most of the issues. I want to go through some of the conditions in the resolution. Would like to ask the board to vote on it this evening if they can, and hopefully move this, move this forward, so that they can complete the work and occupy the site.
So what are your, your questions about the resolution?
So we have, so under modified plan, we have number four. It's kind of a open-ended statement. We weren't planning to provide any additional screening, other than what we've agreed to at this point.
Yeah, that was, that was left in there, because there was some suggestion of additional screening in the rear that was talked about, so it was left in for you guys to just finalize that, that decision, whether it's, you know, whichever way it goes.
Okay, let's get back to that. What else you got, Joe?
Under additional requirements, I, I, number two, I didn't realize we had any open items with Abaca. I guess, I guess we can look into that and, and scratch that if that's no longer an issue. The second section on additional requirements, number seven, I think we need to establish the amount of that cash bond. And that's all I have.
Okay, well, why don't we start from the last comment and move on? So the, the cash bond for the landscaping, John, I would imagine that's for the purchase and installation of the work?
Yeah, that's for the landscaping and the DOT right away, obviously, and it's for the purchase and installation and completion of that work. So typically, the applicant provides their estimate of that, and you guys either accept it or modify it.
Is a portion of that for maintenance, or is that a separate?
That would be a separate bond if you want to have a maintenance bond.
So Joe, do you have any kind of estimate of what that would be upfront?
I was, we were expecting an estimate from the, from the site contractor, but typically what I would suggest here is submitting the estimate if, if John thinks it's adequate. And typically, what we, what we would do is bump it up, you know, 10 or 20% in case the town had to step in and do the work. It would cover that, that administrative end and, you know, additional cost to the town to do that work, so I'd like to play it that way if we can.
Can we change that, John?
Well, you can change the language. I, I think it's, I, I don't think you, I think you can go forward with the, Joe, do you have a problem with the language as written, or do you need some modification to that?
No.
Based on an estimate?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're, we're in agreement on what the, what the bond amount is gonna be.
Yeah, we can do that after the, after the approval.
That's fine with me. Is the board all right with that?
Yeah.
Okay with me.
Yep. I'm good.
Okay, and then the comment before that was Abaca. We know where we stand with them?
Yeah, I thought we were all done with them, but I could be wrong. I think, I thought their biggest, their biggest concern was the the lighting that we had, the floodlights that we had on the building were facing directly straight out, and we resolved that by pointing them directly downward now. I thought that was the only real concern they had. And I think we addressed that.
Right, so if, if you are in truth finished, then that's fine. If not, if there's anything little to go, then I think it works either way, so.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to avoid another going back to the back again.
Yeah. If they haven't indicated before that you have to come back, then you probably don't.
Okay. Okay, then you and I can review that memo offline.
I'm sorry?
We'll, we'll review the memo offline.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine.
And the first comment that was there, probably the most important, was to provide additional screening. So, John, you indicated that it was discussed along the fence line or behind?
Yeah, along or behind the fence line. It was suggested, I think, maybe even by, came up during one of the commentaries from, I think, a neighbor. There was some discussion on it, so it was left in there just for you guys to finalize one way or the other.
I think, I think, though, there was an issue that the fence is pretty much on the property line, so that would have to be in the town right away, correct?
Probably so, yes.
So I'm not in favor of imposing that on the tenant?
No. We need, and besides, the screening came up because of the lighting, and we addressed the lighting, so you wouldn't need the screening to block the lighting. Am I right, or am I wrong?
There was discussion about the lighting from the trucks, so it would be mostly from the trucks, but I think you're right. A lot of, a lot of what it was brought up for has been, reached some conclusion through what we did on the lighting plan.
I think then the screening should be put to sleep.
Is the board in favor of that?
Yeah, I don't think, you know.
Yes.
Okay. So, John, pass those comments. Any issues?
No, I think, I think what you see in this resolution with the requirements and conditions is everything that we had discussed, and I think it's ready to move forward, in our opinion.
Joe, you all set?
Yes.
Members of the board?
I have a comment. Referring to note number three on page four of six of the resolution, which talks about the operations, I want to make sure that the operations are limited to what was described in the application, and in particular, in the noise analysis, where it talks about the number of trucks operating in the evening hours. This is at nighttime. I just want to hold the applicant to those standards as a way of addressing my other, my earlier concerns about the noise. Addressing the noise the way I originally proposed seems to be unworkable, by using decibel standards and things like that, so I don't think that's a good way to go. But if we just say, "Look, this approval is based upon the number and frequency of night deliveries as set forth in the application, that, that covers my concerns, and I think it's doing nothing more than what the applicant has proposed, that we recognize that," so I just want to make sure that that level of detail is in the note that's referenced here, or in the resolution, or someplace, to cover that situation.
Would you be comfortable, Aaron, similar to what we had discussed on other applications with helicopter trips, et cetera, that we just put a maximum on there? Even if, you know, if they say 10 trips, we could put a maximum of 12, or, or whatever was discussed?
Yes, some, something that's objective, that's not burdensome on the applicant, that's derived from their own materials, absolutely, John, that would work.
Yeah, we'll qualify it, however.
Well, what, what you could do is you could add a note, a separate note, that says, you have to add a note to the site plan that states what those maximums are as per the application materials. So that, that can be brought forth onto the site plan, and you guys, before you sign the site plan, is final, we'll look at that note and say, "This is appropriate or not."
Right, and if they need to change the operation in whatever fashion, they would have to come back.
I think that's fine, and it removes the ambiguity that was existing with using other measurements.
Right.
Yeah, I like the second Aaron's concern about that. It's a good, good compromise.
Yeah, and then I would, I would also just say, you know, whatever they estimate the trips, we'll give them a couple of trips on top of that, and that's the end of that, you know? For the time being, anyway. If they get silent trucks and they want to do twice as many, you know, we're in good shape.
Silent trucks, I'm gonna invent that, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
They won't make any noise.
That's, that's a new career, I think.
That is a new career. Emilio, this is Gina speaking from Nestle. Emilio, if you could speak to how many trucks we need?
I'm, I'm okay with what I'm hearing. I don't think that would be a problem. I didn't feel the need to, to add to it. I think that's acceptable.
Right, so Joe, you've got the verbiage for how many there, Nestle is proposing?
Four tractors, four tractors per, per night.
Between eight and two, right?
Right.
Yeah, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go through this, create the note for the plan, and it will go back to the planning board, after your approval, of course, and prior to the signature of the, of the chairman, for their acceptance, just to make sure it's fine, but offline between you, Nestle and Joe and my department, we can come up with those parameters that will draw out from all the application materials.
Sounds good.
Okay, so, so that's the only note you need on that, and the screening, there's not gonna be any screening, we're gonna dismiss that, correct?
That's my opinion.
Correct. My opinion, too.
Great.
Did we have a number of trips for the delivery trucks also, not the tractors?
Yeah, we have, we're showing 28 trucks that are gonna be on the site doing deliveries on a regular basis. Emilio, we'll, we need to talk about that if we want to give yourself a little bit of leeway on that, but right now, we're, we're calling it out as 28 trucks.
Typically, it's a daytime.
What's that?
That's daytime operation, right?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'm not so concerned with daytime.
Yeah, I think the concern is the overnight, Joe, so yeah.
Yep, we're gonna put all that, we're gonna put both of them on, on the site.
Yeah, but don't forget, don't forget, those trucks are big, gonna be moving about the site, being loaded and unloaded.
Of course.
During, during the night, the late hours, so, or early morning hours, so.
Excuse me. Anything else from the board?
Good.
I, I just have one, this is just Gina, I have one other question about the cash bond amount. Because we don't have the actual estimate from the contractor right now for what that landscaping is, you're able to, you know, approve your, you know, move forward tonight, and then we'll, we'll determine the cash amount. I expect, I expected it today, we didn't get it. If I get it, if I get that landscaping amount tomorrow, then we can, you, you can approve the amount tomorrow, is that possible?
Joe said $200,000, I thought.
$250,000. I said $250,000.
$250,000?
Gina, it can actually happen at the next meeting, and it, it's not gonna slow you down?
If, but what, our, our hope is that it can happen prior to the next meeting, so we can get the cash bond between now and next week.
Well, the board doesn't meet until next week, so.
So there's no, so without your knowing what the amount is, if we said $10,000 right now, that that's what it is, because I know that.
No, the resolution can move forward now.
Okay, okay.
Without the, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's perfect. So if the resolution, we want the resolution to move forward tonight, and the bond would be posted before what, the CO gets requested?
Or next week.
Well, you should do it with enough time, so I wouldn't wait till the CO. But if you don't take care of it, you will not get a CO.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, no, no, I, like I said, I had hoped to get it today, we didn't. So tomorrow, by the end of the day, I'm gonna be all over the guy. I just wanted to make sure that, I, I wanted to understand how it affected your resolution tonight, that's all.
Yeah, it doesn't really.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Did you see the Conservation Board memo from today, mentions just to use native species?
No, I didn't see that.
I didn't see it either.
Was that in an email?
Yeah, it came today from Kim, and that was just, um, was the only comment, I think.
Are they suggesting what species? Because we would want something out there that, that's gonna look nice, number one, and number two, it's gonna be tolerant to
Salt.
Salt and.
Yeah.
Just says native plants and roadside plantings, please.
Well, I'll say this, we, we'll, we'll look at that between now and next week, we'll figure that out, and we'll see if we can come up with something that covers all the categories.
There you go. Okay, either way, our approval's gonna say landscaping, so you figure it out, and I would rather have salt-resistant, hardy, you know, that stay year-round if we, if we have to go in that direction. But, you know, obviously, we always appreciate the Conservation Board's comments, and would like the applicants to adhere to them in the best way possible, but I, I want to go on record saying, I think in this particular case, it's, it's important that we have species that will thrive.
I agree. I mean, that's the whole point of it.
Thank you.
All right, any of the comments from the board?
Nope.
John, we missing anything?
Rich?
Yeah?
Jacobstein has brought up that I neglected to post this agenda on the town website. So that would be why maybe there haven't been any extra public.
So that would be why maybe there haven't been any extra public people on the meeting.
Okay. But we posted it in the paper, and...
No, the meeting itself, we post, we said we were having a meeting.
Right, right, right. So what, what does that mean for us?
Well, Jay Copstein is attending. I see him in, so.
Yeah, so they're familiar with it, then.
So if he got noticed, everybody got noticed.
No.
No, I, we sent it to you.
Today's a normal day to have a meeting. I don't think, I don't think that you're prohibited from doing votes at this point because you advertised the meeting.
Any input, Jim?
Well, you've closed the public hearing already, and the comment period has expired. So from that standpoint, this is really just an administrative stat. Also, the draft resolution was on the agenda last time, so it's been public. I don't see a problem voting up.
Good point.
Okay.
Take a vote.
All right, so with Nestle, John Taggart, are any other issues?
No, I, I think that covered every, the only thing... You, you may want to, if you want to add a note about the Conservation Board memo, that it gets, you know, finalized, that you can do that.
All right, why don't we do that?
That's fine.
Jim, any issues with Nestle?
No, I have no comments on the resolution.
Okay, Joe Rena, you all set with the resolution as we've changed it?
Yes.
Any issues from the board?
None.
None.
Thomas, you want to add anything?
I got one.
I see you talking, but I can't hear you, Thomas.
Rich, do you hear me now?
Yes.
Just one quick note, number seven, the one talking about the bond just needs to be rephrased, a couple grammatical errors in it, that's all. If you read, it says planning.
If John Kinkart didn't say it, I don't think it exists.
John didn't say it. He talks about cash bond for the landscaping and the DOT right away. Just if you read the end of that number seven comment about the cash bond, it says the next accepted planning season, it should say planting season, upon approval by the New York State DOT, just a couple grammatical issues in that.
Good man, good man.
It's just one. That's just one. It's just two, it's two, actually. Backing around sentence, that sentence, which is another thing, but anyway. We'll fix them.
Good job, young Padawan.
Thank you, Minister.
All right, so then, otherwise noted, I lost my place here. Any other issues?
I'm good.
All right, then. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution approving site plan, stormwater pollution prevention plan, and wetland permit for Nestle's Water North America Incorporated?
Motion. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Joe, you're not gonna leave, are you?
Oh, I think so.
Why's that?
I think I'm gonna take the rest of the night off.
Same.
No, he likes to stay here till at least 10:00, 10:30.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you all.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
All right, do I have a motion to close the regular?
You have to do that.
What's that?
Did you adopt a neg deck?
I didn't see it in there.
We didn't do a neg deck.
Well.
Is it in there? I didn't see it. And I looked.
I didn't see it either.
I didn't see one. Why don't we do one, and then write it up?
You can, you can adopt it without the paper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, in reference, okay, before we...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Who's that? Who's that?
Jim, please.
You can adopt a negative declaration without a written resolution in front of you. Just at the next meeting, just have the resolution ready and ratify your action.
So the record speaker himself, so it's...
Correct.
Yeah.
So we take any action now?
Yes.
We take a vote on it? So in reference to the Nestle Water neg deck?
Well, wait a second, Rich.
Go ahead.
We should really unwind the approval and then adopt a neg deck and then approve. Am I right, Jim?
Yeah, lead agency neg deck resolution.
All right.
Correct.
So do we, how do we reneg?
I move, I move to negate the vote on the approval until the other procedures are adopted, right?
I second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to be the lead agency for the Nestle Waters project?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to accept a neg deck for the same project?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, just give me a second here. I gotta get back. Oh, yeah, 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 you're all right. You a minute?
See, Joe, good thing you didn't leave.
Yeah.
And Gina, and Emilio.
I just like that everybody knows what IAI means.
There you go.
All right, and last and not least, since we have the other documentation now, do I have a motion approving the resolution for the site plan, stormwater pollution prevention plan, and wetland permit for Nestle's Waters North America Incorporated?
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
All right, Joe.
Thanks for your patience.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Take care.
Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
You're welcome.
Do we now have a motion to move from the regular session into the work session?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.